So like this is my diligence, right? It's kind of where it lives.
Quick question, Chuck, static question about the answer.
Right here. It says in motion or some oh, oh, wait, I don't know. It's like services. Scope of services.
Why AI?
Seventeen.
Right.
But that's it. Maximum amount payable on this. You're only fixed means hundred and ninety one.
That's a bit.
If. So if you find the list of gifts, I know the time to trade down. So you have to halfway through. And so setting a slow day.
Pressing your.
The most.
Yeah, a lot of times to like seal for something. Remember that happened in our last.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like four. So I think that's what he's saying.
I didn't know.
I'm not. I see no matter what.
I should.
Unless you spoke to.
Martha's actually run a lot of this. Been a big help. It's too much for me. You're lying.
Call this meeting in order, please.
Yeah, what are you doing?
If we all could please stand. And before we do the pledge, if we can just have a moment of silence for our friends in Ukraine and show them our support and our unification with them. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for all attending tonight. Just a brief note that we decided on moving the information hearing to to the end of the agenda because we have a light agenda. We want to get that all out of the way and we want to make sure everyone that wants to talk has time to talk and we can. So it shouldn't be more than fifteen, twenty minutes at the most. And that's when we're going to start the public information. So we'll start the work session right away with the Foyt Albert agreements. And that's for the church street and East Fillmore Avenue Bridges. And councilmen have any questions on those?
So this is a requirement to start the process of getting our funding. Is that correct? Or just?
This is the engineering.
Engineering.
The bridges.
Gotcha.
Okay. And if you note on page four, I think it's on both agreements. It gives the the list of costs involved. And the first one is seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty two dollars and forty four cents. That's a minimum charge that if, like Martha was saying, if something happened, we're we ended up not doing it at all, they would be guaranteed that amount of money. The maximum amount that they could charge is one ninety one, four hundred. And it's the same on both. Might be a little. Little difference in the monies, but same theory on both kinds.
And that's part of the reimbursable grant type resume, too.
Yes.
Incorporated.
This is all right, Dave. This is all.
When it's a hundred percent refunded by the state. It's good news. So this by sign this tonight allow us to proceed. I know he's ready to go right next week and start surveying. So a lot of work has to get done to get this built, so.
Any other questions? Luke, Jim. That's good. Okay. Next, we have a site plan application. And this is for the sprouting minds monetary school. And they're looking to move their location from twelve seventy six Mill Road to nine seventy six Davis Road. And is there anybody here? Would you like to come up and address the board on anything about it or? Seems like we just. We'll hear about.
It really wasn't that long ago. It was only a year and a half ago.
Yeah, if you could speak right into the mic, it would help greatly.
Or you can take it out of the holder.
Just put right into it.
So we actually moved to the Mill Road location about a year and a half ago. But we have a lot of students on our waitlist and we can't fit more students in our building. So we found a barn. It's about eight thousand square feet that we'd like to convert to a school.
Any questions from the board?
Is there a, you know, but I mean, I see. Like, oh, sorry, Mike's over here. Are there zoning issues that we need to look at first?
No, a educational facility is a is an allowable use under with a site plan review. So this is the formality here.
Thank you.
What we normally would do is refer this to the planning board to look at.
Yeah, like I'd say, a lot of great feedback about the school. So keep up the good work. I think a lot of people in town really love what you're doing out there.
Oh, thank you.
The one thing I would I would be concerned about is what we spoke about last time is the traffic issues. So I see that there are some things in here to alleviate that. But as it goes to the planning board, I think that's one thing to really keep up because it's kind of a strange turn there. And if you get more kids out there, then it'll it'll probably be more of an issue, so.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to ask which direction the one way driveway should go. I thought Davis to Snyder would be appropriate, but maybe they feel the opposite would be better. So.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to their opinions.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad business is good. Okay, that'll be on the agenda. Next meeting. Next, we have the architectural proposal and schematics for the renovations to the Aurora Community Pool and new public restrooms. And I'll let Councilman Snyder go over this. He's been heading away on that.
Sure. Previously, the board agreed to to a conceptual and feasibility proposal from Fattanese Foltz, Albert and Ernst to do a study on the on the existing pool and curb appeal, the proposed public toilet rooms and the park pavilion. You know, one, two, and three, as as is listed on on this paperwork here. And that was to be in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars and one hundred and twenty four. Since that time, we've kind of switched gears and and the pavilion is not at the top of the list. But we are going to move forward with the with the bathrooms, or at least at this point, we're going to move forward with getting conceptual plans and actual structural plans along with, you know, sections and specifications of what it's going to be on the bathrooms and a complete bid package. And in speaking with Paul Ernst and William Height, they will. We will just take that money that we had allotted for the conceptual plans of the pavilion and so on and so forth, and put that towards the new bathrooms. And and that came out to be about a wash. With the exception of the town will be responsible for a survey of the utilities. So, you know, just exactly where the water comes in, where the where the storm sewer comes in and so on and so forth. We'll have to do that. We'll work with we'll work with Fattanese Foltz, Albert and Ernst in getting that done. Or maybe we'll just let them give us a quote and see what it is. It really shouldn't be. It should be less than two thousand dollars. They'll put it that because it's all right there. We have all of that right there in the adjoining bathroom, so. But that's the proposal. I think it's a very fair proposal and it'll take us one step closer to getting those bathrooms in.
Do we do we have a timeline for when we might have those drawings? I don't know if I should address it to you or to Paul.
I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna say that we'll probably have those within a month. But the work cannot be performed anyway.
Yeah.
Until after the pool is closed, so it'll be the middle of September.
It's like a kid in Christmas. You wanna wanna see the present, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But hopefully we'll get that out in about a month or so, and that way we'll have plenty of time to put the bid out and get the responses and get it lined up.
I think the goal is to to start them at the end of the season, at the end of the pool season.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that for next year, we'll we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. And then we'll move to the code update and the planning board response. Luke, you want to?
Yeah, so Chuck and I were at the planning board meeting on the last Monday. The planning board discussed a few of these small changes that I agree with. I think Chuck, you agree with them as well. And I would recommend that we accept the changes that the planning board made and put this on our agenda for next meeting to do a full review of all the changes.
Great. Anything else?
I'll ask another question. So can those changes be made available prior to when our paperwork usually comes out? We usually get it on Thursday. It seems like this might be a lot more to review before the next meeting.
Yeah, so everything is available in the last meeting's work materials.
Okay.
As a separate document, but we can meet separately, too, to go through it. There's there's a couple of different sections. First is changing the B and I zones to C zones. There's a general C section that applies to all of them and then C one, C two, C three, which is basically replacing our B one, B two and I. And then there is a West Falls overlay. And in addition, there are some design standards that are not mandatory, but give guidance to any potential developers of what a project should be, should consist of. So I think we should probably go over it individually before the next meeting, one on one. And then Chuck and I'll do a presentation two weeks from now.
Thanks.
Okay. Y'all good, Luke? All right. So we'll go right into our meeting. We have, for those who've just joined us, the public information hearing we're putting at the end of our agenda, only because we have a really light agenda and we want to make sure that everyone here who wants to speak tonight has plenty of time to do that. So we'll go right into number two, which is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the April eleventh, two thousand twenty two work session and meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Audience, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any of the items on the agenda, except for the Rails, the Trails. We wish you that and hope that you could wait till the actual public forum. So if anyone has any other questions on what's going on in the agenda, please come up to the mic and give us your name and address. Nobody? Okay. Unfinished business, none. We'll go right into new business. And we'll start with the just the Foyt Albert agreements for the replacement of the church street bridge first. We went over the costs. Page four, again, the minimum would be seventeen thousand, one fifty two, forty four. The maximum would be one ninety one, four hundred. And on the Fillmore, East Fillmore Bridge, the amounts would be a minimum of fifteen thousand, six ninety two, eighty and a maximum of one hundred ninety five thousand dollars. And these are for the architectural engineering of replacement of both bridges. Just quite a bit, little bit more involved. Did Dave leave or you're still here? Dave, do you want to talk about there's a little bit more acquisition of land and so forth?
Yeah, this is two bridges scheduled to be demolished and erected in the village. One's on Church Street, others on East Fillmore Street. These Fillmore Street currently is a one lane span. So when we get to doing that, there's going to be some land acquisition. So these are going to be designed hopefully by late summer and put out the bin in the fall. And then next spring, hopefully both those are going to be going in. And this was all paid through the Bridge New York Grant, hundred percent full. So we got about one point eight million dollars for this, so.
Great job on that.
Good one.
Any other questions from the board? All right, do I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement with Foyt Albert for the church street and the East Fillmore Street Bridge? Motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. All right, next we have B, which is the site plan review for the sprouting minds Montessorio School, which is located right now at twelve seventy six Mill, which want to relocate to nine seventy six Davis Road. And we have the site plan review application. What we normally do is we we refer this to the planning board for their thoughts on it. So do I have a motion to refer this to the planning board?
So moved.
Joe? Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Net is carried. Next, we have the architectural proposal. The Fattanese Foltz and Albert Ernst. And this is for the renovations to the community pool project. And as Chuck discussed, is there a final cost or is it just a watch?
Well, I mean, I guess we'll just make a motion to appropriate the funds that were allotted to go towards the pavilion, to go towards the the structural, the construction and structural design of the of the bathrooms.
Okay. And add to that, that you authorized, it's an authorized supervisor to sign. Okay.
And can we have the off, can can I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the this document transferring, changing the funds that were allotted for the pavilion to go towards the payment for the construction and bid drawings of the bathrooms?
Do we have a motion? Motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. And next we have a photo donation. I'm going to turn this over to Joe.
Oh. Thank you Supervisor Bach. Well, Orlando, Monaco, do you want to come forth and speak a little bit on your? If everybody looks to the back, I know it's hard to see. There are three panels of photographs are being donated to the town by resident Orlando, Monaco. And at this point, I invite him to come up and sort of speak to, you know, where the photos were taken and your motivation in donating them generously. And they are beautiful to the town.
Thank you. Good evening.
And into the microphone, please. I know it's awkward, but yeah.
You know what? Well, keep it on there for now. Thank you. Thank you, Town Board, everyone, for allowing me firstly to to come and present the pictures. In this case, these are photographs from sinking ponds. Believe it or not, in your very backyard, you have an incredible nature wildlife sanctuary, which in this case is pretty extraordinary to see that it's only seventy four acres in size. It's actually about a third the size of, in this case, the Autobahn, which is in Jeva. But my objective opinion is it's it has much more to offer in terms of some wildlife sightings and that. So these pictures are basically donated through our group friends of sinking ponds wildlife sanctuary. And partially the donation is just to make everyone aware what a beautiful sanctuary this is and an amenity that whether you're in the village or the town. But it also is a thank you for the time spent because we also have a project that we're thinking of, in this case, getting involved with for the Hubbard Road entrance for Major's Park. So thanks, Joe, for your time, David, for your time. We'll see where that project goes depending what the Town Board and the Open Space Committee would like. But that's really it. So that's all I can say is everybody get down to sinking ponds and enjoy it. We'll do whatever we can to make sure it stays as natural and pristine and beautiful and make sure it's protected and respected. So that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have E, which is a budget transfer. And this is in the water fund. I'm sorry. This is to correct an overdrawn appropriation account, an error in the budget last year. And it's for a thousand dollars as listed. Do you have it for Kathleen Moffett, Ivy? You don't have it?
No, I have it.
Oh.
For a motion.
Okay. I just want to make sure everyone had it. I thought you were looking for it. Any any questions on it? If not, do I have a motion to? Okay, the budget transfer request form from Kathleen Moffett.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Now we have another one from Kathleen Moffett. This is a budget amendment from Easter or baseball. She asks to amend the budget to record the thousand dollar annual payment received from the Easter or baseball and softball per the agreement approved at the April eleventh, two thousand twenty two Town Board meeting. The amendment is follows increase revenue line A two seven zero five dot two donations. Easter or baseball supplies by one thousand dollars and increase appropriation line A seven one one zero dot four four four. Parks landscaping and supplies by one thousand.
So moved.
Motion, okay, by Luke. Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have request to hire seasonal employees. This is from Elizabeth De Vizio from the Highway Department. Please approve hiring Steven Kaminsky, Jr. as a seasonal employee. He resides at one seventy four West Falls Road, West Falls, New York. His hourly rate will be fifteen dollars per hour and you'll be starting on or after May sixteenth, two thousand twenty two. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move that, Mo. I'll move that.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. We still have some open seats if anyone wants not to stand up front here. It's not like church. Okay, H. This is another request from Elizabeth De Vizio. And please approve a ten hour, four day work week for the highway employees from May second, two thousand twenty two to September second, two thousand twenty two. This is a normal practice that we do every year.
So moved.
Motion by Luke. Have a second? Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have the two highway two eighty four agreements that go along with the church street and the East Fillmore Street Bridges. And this is just allowing the Highway Department to spend the money from the grant respectively. So on the first one for Church Street, it is seven hundred and ninety nine thousand, four hundred sixty one dollars. And for the Fillmore, East Fillmore, it's eight hundred and sixty three thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
My Chuck.
Second.
My Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Recreation. This is the two thousand twenty two rate chart. And it shows the increases in in the hourly wage. And that's assuming a minimum wage thirteen dollars, twenty cents per hour from twelve fifty, two thousand and twenty one. So do I have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
Second by Joe. Second by Luke. Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's carried. And next we have a request from Chris Mueshaven, our department director. He's requesting to hire seasonal pool and recreation staff. Is presented on our chart. The rates are based on the board's approval of the two thousand twenty two rate chart attached. And it went from twelve fifty to thirteen dollars and twenty cents per hour, most cases. Any question? Now we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Second by Luke. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Communications reports, we have none. We'll go to business from the board members.
I could just jump in real quick. Connor, can you 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 mentioned it might be a little quiet. Can you hear this or is it?
I think just if we speak into the microphones right next to them, then you can hear it, right, Connor? So, yeah. Just make sure, Jim, you get really close in there.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Jim. I got a note from Connor saying we weren't being loud enough.
Oh, I'm going to start with you tonight.
Serves me right. As I sent around that email, there was some concern. Obviously, there's a tragic accident. I don't know the results of it on Center and Blakely Corners over the weekend. Some residents have reached out and said maybe that's an area of concern. And then many other chimed in and said that over the years, there's been a great many accidents at that intersection. Now, both of those roads are county owned, so we have no control over speed there or placement of stop signs or anything of the type. But with with the board, the opening, the idea of petitioning the county to see if they can take a look at that intersection and see if there's anything that can be done to mitigate any possible traffic accidents.
Martha, we have a contact at the county. Is there, can we get together and maybe call her? See if there's something.
Mr. Chief Krieger, has there been a history of a lot of accidents and things happening there?
For some reason, occasionally we have people that stop on the stop sign of Blakely and then pull off the traffic.
Yeah.
Why, I don't know. It's not people running the stop. It's stopping and then pulling up.
Yeah. Yeah, I, when you go by it, it does feel like it needs something.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's it's worth, I think it's worth sending a letter and see if somebody can come out and take a look and does it need more visibility? I don't I don't have the I don't have the solution.
We'll reach out with the county.
Excellent, thank you.
Jim?
Just briefly, a little over a year ago, there was the West Falls Advisory Committee that was put together. And on day one, I think there was about forty people that attended. And it's been going strong ever since. And last week, there was a meeting, a general information meeting about the Erie Canaragas Rail Trail. It was attended by probably sixteen people. Connor, Snyder is the chair of it. Joe McCann, myself were out there. Scott Beeler and others were out there as well with different ideas as well. But it was it was really encouraging because it's not just about the rail trail. It was about the improvements that are going to happen to Route two forty, the drainage issues that a lot of us have been suffering out there in our parking lots and things like that. So it was really encouraging to have more and more people out there that are really excited about their hamlet and and want to voice their opinions on what they can do to keep it a lot of it the same and to make some improvements as well.
Thanks, Jim. Chuck?
I stopped by the community pool this morning and our Highway Department was just finishing up or close to finishing up, spreading the spreading the topsoil and and the diamond dirt around. And and the benches are looking great and the backstops are in place. And so thank you, Dave, for getting all that done. It's looking good. And just in the nick of time, I think baseball starts.
It started Thursday.
Oh, okay, wow. All right. Luke?
Yeah, two things. Number one, the code red proposal, we needed to get two other offer proposals to compare with. I did get those two proposals in writing, so now we're able to proceed with that. That's the mass communication system that we'd like to use. So I think if we have time next meeting to put on the agenda to have a presentation about the three options, then we can talk about what we would want to proceed with. The second thing, Dave and I went out to kind of a small issue, but we did look for a suitable place for the welcome to the Hamlet Westfall sign. The DOT had emailed Martha a couple of months back that they don't want the sign next to the current Westfall's road sign, the green and white one. So we are proposing to take that sign down the hill a little bit to the address one eight oh nine Davis. So if you're coming into Westfall's, not at Old Glenwood, but the house on the corner of Bame and two forty.
Yeah, for the people of Westfall's in between Rock Haven and Bame Road.
Right.
There's a small field there. And we picked a really nice spot. I think people will appreciate it really well right there.
So I think that's just the only update with that. And then we'll, Dave and I'll move forward with the filing. So I think that's just the only update with that. And then we'll, Dave and I'll move forward with the filing that for the permit, the first permit and then the second permit. And we should be good to go.
It should be within the next couple of weeks. We'll be having that installed.
Yep.
Very good. I have nothing tonight, so we'll go right to audience. Anyone that wants to address the board and anything but the rails, the trails. Please come up to the mic. All right.
Hi, Rod Semione, Byberry Court. Uh, had a question on the. I know it's procedural, but the overtime or the, I'm sorry, the uh, change in uh, ten-hour, four-day work week. I have two questions. Does this result in automatic overtime for working forty hours?
Um, Brad, what we do is, is uh, we just work a four-day week. It actually saves on the overtime because we're able to schedule our roadwork on those days. So generally, when you do a road job, you're gonna be working ten, twelve hours a day. So that's why we do it. So there's no guarantee overtime, no.
Well, what I'm saying is the contract have. OT as in the federal guidelines, forty out, over forty hours is.
Over forty hours.
Eight hours per day.
That's correct.
Okay, second question is, is there an overlap of shifts?
No.
Some will work, so.
Yes, yes. Actually, a Highway Department still was gonna be on the four tens. But our parks, buildings and uh, dog control beyond the five-day work week. Because uh, there's duties that have to be done. On that fifth day.
Okay, so there's not people on the highway that's gonna work Monday through Thursday and some Tuesday through Friday.
No, just Monday through Thursday.
So no highway availability on Friday.
I wouldn't say no availability if there's an emergency, yeah. Right. And like I said, it's a, it's just for a short time we do this and, and it actually is to save cost. Because I were able to under-schedule our own chip, which that's could be a twelve, fourteen-hour day. So when you add up. The, the paving times, it actually saves. So that's the main reason besides giving up three-day weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anybody else? Sir? Just give us your name and address.
My name is Kevin Kluge, seventy Buffalo Road. Just a point of fact from Luke. Uh, I am a coach, the East Aurora Baseball and Softball Association. I was at Moose Field tonight and Forty-two North. They have not been touched. There's still grass. There's no dirt has been raised, no grass has been cut. There's moss growing on the diamonds. There's been no dirt put down. So I'm not sure what you're referring to, other than mulch being spread by the pool, maybe.
Uh, that was not my comment.
That was mine.
Okay, well.
Well, I was over there. Which two fields were those two?
Answer, the fields you're talking to, no, no maintenance has been done to. We're talking about the two brand-new ones, Kevin. Uh, that were just built, not the two you're talking about.
Good.
And we don't do any maintenance right now because it's too wet. You can't groom them.
We started practice tonight.
It's pretty wet.
It wasn't wet at all. I was just there.
I promise. So they'll get to it. It's just been a tough spring.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Did you wanna speak?
Hi, Dave Norton, uh, eight sixteen Knox Road. Just, just a thought on the uh, Lakely Corner Center Street. And again, I don't know if there's data there to support this or not, but personal experience. Um, when I come to a uh, a intersection like that, that says cross-traffic does not stop. It gets my attention. And um, uh, an example is a center line and uh, Hunter's Creek Road, for instance. Top of the hill there. Nice big sign warning you that cross-traffic does not stop. So again, whether the, there's data out there that bears out that. That that is effective, um, it is for me.
Yeah.
So maybe other folks.
Signage could help. Thank you, Dave.
You talk to the county. Something you want us to get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. And we'll go right into the staff reports. Um, I will start with Shane. Nothing from Shane. Um, Brad? Where are you, Rod? Anything? No, Paul? I gotta make sure I get everyone. I don't want to forget anybody. Um, Liz? Okay, Connor? Adam? Chris, you snuck in on me.
Uh, just updated on the back apartment. Uh, they can't afford to pull in the summer. Uh, two days. Um, right now, we are a little short on light carts, so I decided to run a light cart, of course, on Saturdays. Uh, to throw up a few. I've got high potential for them. Um, and then most of us mustn't power.
Great.
I, I just wanna remind everybody. Uh, we have the Northeast Rugby Association Championship's gonna be here at Knox Fields Saturday and Sunday. There's over thirteen hundred players coming. It's open to the public. Um, just make sure everybody knows about it. Should be a good time.
Thanks. That's cool. I think that's everyone, right? Okay, uh, Tim, just walked in. Got anything? To tell us?
Oh, Doug's here too from the planning board.
Doug, oh, you got a mask on. Sorry, Doug. Anything? No, okay. I think I have everyone.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so we can go on now to the. Uh, public information hearing. And um, of, I'm referred to Luke to um, run by just. Um, let's say the rules, but what we're asking people to do. And then um, I have a. A list of people that wanna speak. If anyone else wants to speak, we can get it. Uh, is there another list?
Another sheet out there.
There's another sheet out there. If you're not on this one. Sign up. Okay, Luke, do you wanna?
Yep. So the first thing to say is that for any online listener, if you would like to uh, to speak, use the raise your hand function on Zoom. And we'll get to you at the end of the comments. Um, then to anybody in the room, actually, for everybody, um, we'd like to thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to speak to us tonight. Um, we are uh, seriously approaching the question. About what the town's involvement it would be or non-involvement into the uh, basically the approach to the multi-use trial that's being developed. Through the hamlets of Jewettville and West Falls. Purpose of tonight's session is to understand concerns and your thoughts about that project and the town's potential role uh, within that project. In order for everyone to be heard, we would like to ask that you speak only once. Uh, we'll also like to limit each speaker to three minutes. Uh, we will have a timer. Um, if you uh, go over three minutes, then we're certainly uh, uh, able to accept any comments in writing. Uh, you can do it by email to townboard@townofaurora.com, or you can do it by mailing it to the town hall here. Um, for the official minutes, we'd also ask that you provide your full name and home address prior to speaking. Uh, the sign-in sheet in the back, the first one Supervisor Bach has. If anyone else would like to speak who, who has not signed up on the first sheet, please do so on the second sheet. And we'll bring that up when we're done with this. First round. Thank you again for your thoughts and we look forward to hearing your comments.
This gentleman in the front had a question.
Simple question because you do sign in when you get here. And I asked this young lady. Do you have to do anything special to speak? And I would just wanted to ensure that I can speak and I didn't sign in.
Oh, you didn't sign in?
Well, I signed in.
Okay, as long as you signed in. Well, we plan on going down the whole list. If you signed in, you speak.
Signing out in the hall before you walk through the door? Out in the hall before you walk through the door? Out in the hall?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good.
But you think you took a Sharpie to the?
There might be several signup sheets. I don't know, Luke.
Okay, so.
I didn't sign in. The sheet was there. There was no sheet when I walked in. He was very. I like talking and then on what I hear.
Okay. I, okay. All right, we're gonna start. So I'm gonna ask you to um, come up to the mic and make sure you talk right into the mic. And then Jan. Uh, Dalldoll, is it? Am I saying that right, Jan? And make sure you speak right into the mic, please.
Jan Dalldoll, seven thousand and four Davis Road. I'm the last house before the steel bridge. Now, my property puts up to the railroad property. And I target shoot back there. Are there gonna be hours when this uh, trail thing is gonna be closed? Or is it gonna be open twenty-four hours a day? And who's gonna do the maintenance on it? And also, who's gonna keep the four-wheelers and the dirt bikes off of it? Am I not gonna be allowed to target shoot anymore? When I bought that place ten years ago. There is no talk about trails. Can somebody give me?
Well, we're not, we, we are not representing the Erie Canaragus Rail Trail. We're, we're collecting. So I, I assume somebody from the Erie Canaragus Rail Trail will speak tonight, but we're not advocating on one side or the other. But just for clarification, do you shoot over the, the railroad property?
I shoot into the railroad.
Into the railroad property. Gotcha.
We're just gathering information tonight. We're not uh, we're not giving any comments. Because it's not really our project. We're just trying to get comments from the public. And then go to the Erie County Rails and Trails people and give them the comments. So. Thank you, sir. Joyce Transky.
Think I'm okay. My name is Joyce Transky. I live at two ninety Old Glenwood Road. Rails to Trails goes behind my property. They also have a ditch that runs parallel to my property. Railroad has taken care of the ditch for the, I've lived there for forty-seven years. The railroad is taking care of the ditch. Every three years, Penfold Enterprises comes, cleans it, end of discussion. When it plugs up, I get thirty to thirty-five feet of water in my backyard. The head of the Rails to Trails people came by when they first started this. Um, Gary Willard said to me, same deal. When it needs to be cleaned, clean it out, send us the bill, we'll pay it. Surprise, they would not pay it. Thirteen hundred dollars I had to pay out of my pocket, so their drain doesn't flood my backyard. I need somebody from them to tell me how I'm gonna get. I don't care if they fix it. I really don't care. If they just keep it open so that I don't have all that water in my backyard. And I really, to tell you the truth, I don't want a bunch of people in my backyard. I live in the country, so I don't have all those people. If I wanted people in my backyard, I'd live in a village, but I don't. So I'm very, very opposed to it. And I wish that they would step up, because if, what they could have done was, when I sent the bill, sent me the check. And said, you know what? Next time, follow protocol. Nobody gave me protocol. And when I tried to, tried to talk to Mr. Willard, he resigned from the board. How convenient. I just think that it's nothing but. A joke. I'm sorry, I've, I'm, I've done with it. It needs to be cleaned again and I need somebody to clean it. And I don't think anybody in this room feels that they should pay thirteen hundred dollars to clean somebody else's property, so their property doesn't get damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Jerry Barber. Baker, sorry.
No, I lived uh, along the railroad track for at least eighty-five years. Okay. Joyce is right. The railroad used to clean that ditch out every three years. I believe they hired Penfold. They, he would dredge that ditch and it was no wider than from here. Here, the most, right now, that ditch behind my house. That ditch behind my house is at least from that edge of the chair way over to here. It's like a swamp. Here's what happened. Lots of water comes down behind the Catholic church. It's constantly. Because years ago, I believe that when they put in Ellis Drive. The drainage system normally come down the hill and that's what. I understand. That's why there's so much water coming down. Well, in the meantime, trees or branches have fallen in the ditch. Because it hasn't been dredged or cleaned out for I don't know how many years. But. The water, instead of running. Towards Joyce's house, it was running my way down towards the corner in cahoots down there. So it's like a swamp back there. I mean, last summer. You could just see insects swarming all over. I mean, that definitely has to be taken care of, whether this resolution passes or not. But I am opposed to the trail. I have, I have had trespassers, snowmobilers cutting from my property. To Davis Road because I own like two hundred feet on the back of the railroad. And we've had things stolen, had a motorcycle stolen right out of our garage. It ended up being located up on Lower East Hill Road because with the railroad. And I'm, I'm not the only one that has had things stolen. People would go by in the daytime, see things, come back at night. And they have a escape route either going either way on that railroad, uh, either on the Old Glenwood Road. Well, the, the route that the person took went down. Old Glenwood or down the railroad track to Bame Road on the railroad. Up Bame Road to Lower East Hill Road. I mean.
Thirty seconds remaining.
It, it, well, it is. That you have to worry about things being stolen. And I know my neighbor next door, Jerry's repairs. He has had numerous complaints. So I am opposed to it.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Jan, and I cannot read the writing. It's two seventy-nine Oakwood. Sorry, how, how do you?
Uh, yes, my name is John Sundquist, two seven, Sundquist, S U N D Q U I S T. Lousy handwriting. Everybody does typing says. So um, yeah, I'm here to support the rail trail. Um, I'm not gonna go into a lot of the explanations about why these are popular throughout the country and are um, in, built in many, many locations. I'm sure there'll be a lot of people here talking about that tonight. Um, I mainly wanna point out that there are definitely some specific issues. Along certain points of the trail that need to be looked at because they are issues with, you know, houses being close by. There's the outer range and all kinds of. Some locations. But the individual locations. Uh, have to be, think about how that impacts dozens of miles of trail where they don't have these impacts going on. And typically, there can be done, there can be engineering solutions that could be made at each ones of these locations. Such that uh, we don't have to jeopardize and lose dozens and dozens of miles for several hundred feet here, several hundred feet there. Uh, because that's not fair to the community. Like I said, I'm sure lots of other people will be talking about. Um, you know, the advantages that these give to uh, a, 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 a lot, a lot of people. And uh, so I'm not gonna repeat that. And, and I also just want to point out that um, uh, you know, to the previous presenters, uh, discussion about uh, crime and things like that. One of the best things you can do, because right now it's not really an established trail. I mean, the uh, uh, Rails and Trails group has possession of it, but it's not really developed yet. One of the best ways to uh, to uh, to mitigate presidential problems is to make it an active and well-used uh, uh, trail. Such that um, people uh, respect it and um, and can have eyes and ears out there for everybody. So. Anyways, I'm, I'm here to support it and um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Dave Norton.
Hi, Dave Norton, eight sixteen Knox Road, Town of Aurora. Uh, I'm here to actually speak in uh, in favor of the project as well. Uh, and a few personal things about it that I would, I'd like to share with the folks here. I uh, am a user of uh, rail trails currently in other communities. Um, both in Western New York and I've used some in other parts of the, the country as well. And I did wanna point out uh, that myself and uh, our friends that go to other places to use those. Um, we don't just use the trails there. But we also uh, stop at various businesses in the area while we're there, whether it's uh, locally, it could be Lancaster, it could be Clarence, it could be the city of Buffalo. So while we're doing that, we stop and we spend money uh, at the local businesses along that uh, area. Those areas where we're using the trails, which we would do uh, along uh, along the rail trail that we're talking about right now. And uh, so they'll be benefit to the, the family businesses along that area, uh, to the greater community. Uh, if this uh, project is to go through, because myself and friends like I will frequent it and uh, make it. And uh, I cross-country ski as well as bicycle, so it'll be a year-round kind of thing that those businesses will, will benefit. Uh, a personal thing uh, regards to riding in the streets versus riding on the rail trails, definitely safer. Um, my wife is very hesitant to ride in the streets. Um, my wife is very hesitant to ride in the streets, uh, anymore because she's afraid she's going to get hit by a car or a truck or something like that. Uh, so we have to drive now to go ride together, um, and get some exercise there as if, as if we had to.
In the back, they're asking if you can speak in the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, so if we had a trail, uh, closer by to where we live, we wouldn't have to drive to these other communities to make use of that. And my, so my wife could feel safe to go biking and get the health benefits of, of that, um, of that particular thing. So, uh, and, um, one other personal note is, uh, the property I live on happens to back up to Knox Farm State Park. And we have a, uh, trail that goes behind our house. We've lived in the house for about ten and a half years now. My parents lived in this same house before we moved in, as long as the park's been open. And we have not had any crime issues. Generally, it's people might give a wave when they're going by. We might hear kids laughing, you know, those kind of things. We have not personally had any issues.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Well-used trail. Um, thank you. Um, and the, um, let's see, there's one last thing I wanted to say and now I'm, I'm losing, uh, track of what it was. Uh, shoot. Uh, so anyway, I guess I'm going to leave it at that. So if I want to do something else, I'll go send an email. All right.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
John Lyons.
Hi, John Lyons, uh, one fifty-five Oldian Street in the Village. I'm speaking in pretty much in favor of the rail, rail trail. My wife Natalie and I travel extensively to ride rail trails. You know, we travel, we leave our money, we come back and we've ridden all over the Northeast, uh, Washington DC to Pittsburgh on, on those rail trails. The Minuteman Trail in Massachusetts, the, the very nice Freedom Trail or the Friendship Trail across the river in Canada. They're nice there. And this one promises to be quite spectacular. The little bit that's open is, is, is really quite nice. So I think it would be a good thing, um, and I, and people really like them. People who have them, they're, they're, they've already built into the fabric of their lives if the rail to trail is there. And you can tell just by talking to people there, you know, you're in a restaurant, they're, the focus is the trail. They're, um, they're happy to have it. And also, whether they, whether the original owners of the property, when a rail trail was developed, wanted it or not, things change. People move in, people move out. And by this time, every mature, on every mature trail I've ridden on that has, that where property backs up to it, there's a little path, sometimes a little bridge to get you over the hopefully well-maintained drainage ditches that are on either side. Every house, they, they, they want to connect. They maybe didn't, maybe some homeowner did not at one time, but the property has changed hands and now everybody wants in. So I think it's a great thing if we can pull this off. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick LaFieber, am I saying that right?
You'll have to excuse me. I'm profoundly deaf, so somebody had to tell me. I just got called, okay? My name is Rick LaFieber and I'm a recovering volunteer at, at stage four right now. And, uh, but in my real life in Cataragus, I'm the executive director of the Cataragus Local Development Corporation. And what we do is community and economic development. One of the projects that I was involved in in nineteen ninety-nine, the county planner called me and asked me if I would go to a meeting in which there was a group that was trying to create a Rails to Trails. I had a not-for-profit five oh one C three that would fit the configuration. So he wanted me to go down and talk to him, which I did. And in that meeting, I said, well, this is great, but you know, they take seven to fifteen years normally. And I said, I don't know if I'll live that long. So my question is, is where's the money? Because the money will move it as fast as possible and to give you the very best product in the long run. Well, they said there's federal funds available. Okay. I said, we're going to apply for it. We applied for it, got a T twenty-one grant. It was the largest T twenty-one grant in Western New York at that time. We had twelve point one four miles that we took from the IDA. We took it as fee simple, so we owned it. And the, what they did was they allowed us that, I applied for the grant, got the grant and then took the property. So we were able to take the value of the appraised value of that property as our twenty percent match. So from the time we took the property to the time we opened it, we, uh, it took us five years. That, that was in two thousand and five, we opened. We ran that for the last sixteen years. Last year, in that process, it became the most popular trail in, uh, other than Allegheny State Park in Cataragus County. Last year in April, Allegheny State Park bought it from us and now it's part of the state system. You have to make a very logical decision on a very emotional, uh, uh, idea here. And, and that's hard, but there's good people on both sides of this, for and against it. And, but you're going to be the one who's going to be deciding, you know, why should go forward? There's a lot of hidden costs in a trail. And one of the things that I found when I did our trail was the watershed was completely out of whack. And by doing the Rails to Trails underneath the federal program, it brings it back. And the numbers are quite sheer. Ours was only twelve point one four miles. This is going to be twenty-seven miles. But we had eight hundred and eleven feet of drainage pipe, thirty thousand.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Ditching, and seventy-five hundred feet of, uh, uh, wood decking put in, seventeen hundred tons of riprap, ninety-eight ton, ninety-eight tons of crushed gravel and twenty-seven thousand tons of earth mining on twenty-seven, uh, on twelve miles. That, you're going to have substantially more than that. I'm going to give you copies of that just so that you have something to study. My card is on that. I'm also a board member, a wasn't board member for Erie Cap Rail Trail. Fortunately, I've been going extremely deaf. Uh, I realize it was time after thirteen years that I had to move on. And so like that number is still good. I'm working with one of the adjacent landlords right now, poppin' in on his problem. And which was a legitimate problem. It can come from the three cap rail trail, which results in a river. But that, his problem should be resolved in May or June of this year. And we have a private donor, an anonymous donor that is contributing to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bach, could I just make a quick point of clarification? Just to clear up any, uh, sorry, we're on the same page. The town board has no authority to approve or deny this trail. The only, uh, uh, option available to us is to issue what's called a resolution of support, which is required by, uh, a number of agencies to issue grants to the trail. So the matter before the board is not approval or denial of the trail. It's whether or not to issue a resolution of support. Just, just to make sure that's clear.
And just to add to that, we, we won't be voting on that tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, Gary Hube.
Gary Huber, sixty thirty Thornwood Drive, Boston, New York, Amber. So, um,
So I can just speak right into the microphone? Yeah, thanks.
Hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, full conclusion, I'm a lifetime member of the West Falls Conservation Club. I raised two kids out of there. One's a doctor now and one's a state trooper. Um, I chose that club because of its leadership. So I was always fighting for the club about this Rails to Trail. And then I got invited down to that fire hall meeting. You were there. And, um, I got to listen to all those people talking and I'm trying to add up in my head. Most of the people in that room didn't want the trail. Do you agree? You were there.
Well, most of the people that spoke, just to be accurate.
That was there, right. So I decided, beautiful day, Sunday, to get in my car for myself, my own personal self, and knock on doors from where the bar used to be on Davis all the way down to the Colton Bridge. And I got to talk to a lot of people. And I wrote down who was for, who was against, who was neutral and all that. And I came up with the majority of the people did not want that trail. They had all kinds of reasons. So I know you're all elected officials and you're public servants. So, and the way I look at it, the majority rules. That's the way I look at it. Okay, but it was really sad, some of the stories that they had. And I think some of you people should walk down there like I did and the Rails to Trail people didn't do since two thousand and eight. And go talk to those people. That's what you need to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to try to say this next name. I hope I don't.
We have some people online that are talking. I don't know if you want to, Vivian Liberto said, by approving support, you are approving the trail. And then Evan was saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but not approving support does not stop the trail. It stops some grant funding. And then Tom Kin said, I'm not approving this trail.
Faber Zinski, is there, uh, there's no address, there's no town. Is there anybody?
Rich? It's an R, yes.
I'm sure I murdered that. I'm sorry, but I.
Just a quick note, Elizabeth, I think Luke mentioned that, that the online people would go last.
Rich Fabaszewski, I'm Chico Logan, New York. I'm a member of West Falls. I've been a member for about fifteen years now. My kids, uh, grew up there, took archery there, went on to, uh, if you've, any user familiar with the Empire State Games, which is no longer around, trained out of there, took medals there for Western. Uh, Jake Kaminsky, Olympic archer, took silver, two different Olympics, trained out of there. Uh, right now, we're holding, uh, trap with Lancaster and East Aurora schools, which have gone to states in national tournaments and taken places. Rails to Trails has spoken with us and said that they're looking to keep us open, but we have nothing guaranteeing that. As you said, you can't stop this, but you do hold a key. And a key is to those funds. Yes, the funds could develop this the right way, but it could also open the door and slam it on us. Now, you stated you like to see that we're open. I hope you mean it. But without anything in concrete, in writing, that's holding these people's feet to the fire, it's meaningless. I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Steve Bovee.
It's actually Steve Bo, uh, eighty-four thirty-eight.
Not doing very good tonight.
I've, I have a lot of friends that are for the trail. I have friends that are against the trail. And I like to do, I, I like to basically make my own mind based on the facts that I'm given, my own research, that sort of thing, like I do with news or anything else. And the thing that hit me hardest was when I heard Bike Path. And I remember, and I won't use the guy's name because I don't feel like it's right to make rock stars out of predators. But there was a guy that used a bike path as, uh, his vehicle for choosing his victims. And when I heard that this was going to be something that we were going to possibly fund, the creation of a new bike path, someplace for somebody to use as their area to stalks hide out and wait for their next victim, kind of got me thinking, I don't want my name on that. And I hope you guys don't want your names on that either. Um, like it was just mentioned earlier, this is going to be, what, how many miles of this? Who's going to be policing this? There's, it's really just kind of, you know, we're, 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 we're counting on everybody being honest and responsible citizens. There's a lot of people out there that are not honest and responsible citizens. There are predators out there. And if you do something like this where you're inviting more traffic in this area, that, yeah, some people probably go down it every once in a while because it's just, you know, the old rail bed. If it stays like that, then you're going to see the same level of crime that has been enjoyed as a result of that. If you develop it, you're going to populate it more and give predators more of a menu to choose from. That's all I got.
Thank you. Larry Lang.
He passed.
L. Bye? Yes. No. You're on the list. We're taking them in order.
I didn't realize as far as my name on the speaker. My name is Al Guy. I live at five thirty-one Broward Court in Alden. Uh, I'm a member of West Falls Conservation Society, probably only a member for about three, four years. Helped the club out for probably six. Um, what I am upset about is that we can't get anything from the Rails for Trails people in writing to say that they're going to not have West Falls Conservation Society nonexist. Now, maybe they don't realize that if they make this trail, then that eliminates our trap, that eliminates our archery. So junior archery, uh, Olympic archery, that, that discontinues. We've got, um, a twelve-year-old kid who got a, a award from the Nayarre County Federation for amateur sportsman of the year because he shot a perfect score in Las Vegas of six, six hundred in two days. Okay? And where was he trained? He was trained at West Falls Conservation. There was an Olympic archer. I don't remember his name because unfortunately my memory sucks, but he was trained also at West Falls. West Falls Conservation has, um, excellent teachers as far as archery goes. They've got excellent teachers as far as trap goes. They teach the trap teams from East Aurora and, uh, Lancaster. They came in first place last year in the first time of being in this competition. There's another, I want to, Zeller. I can't think of his first name, but Brian, Brian Zeller. He's teaching a, uh, I, I think she's a quadriplegic. She's in a wheelchair. He's taught her from not being able to draw the ball to being competent. He's actually talking about making a three D course where she could travel her wheelchair on it at the club. Apparently I'm told that you can't adjust the rail bed. So you can't build a wall to stop trap or arrows because you can't dig down in there to put a wall up that's going to hold it up. Now, whether or not you could put a concrete tunnel there on top of the, the stone, I don't know. But the Rails for Trails people are not telling us that this is what they'll do. They ask for ideas.
Remaining.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Oh, thanks. So they ask for ideas. Jack Boken, the president, has given them ideas for the past couple of years to no end. We're going nowhere. Four years, supposedly East Aurora's been against this. I don't think you have a right to change it right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, Jack. Jack. Is it, I can't read the last name. Oakland? Oakland? Yes. Did you sign up, Jack?
Yeah, I signed in.
Did you want to speak? It's your three minutes now, whatever you want to do. If you want to be at the end, if you want to be at the end, you can. Oh, would you rather do it at the end than?
If you, if there are issues that come up and you want me to address them later, I'm more willing to do that.
Three minutes are up now. No, I'm just kidding.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jack Boken from West Falls Conservation. Is this working?
Yep.
Okay. It's funny how you can't hear it up here. Um, just for clarification, we've met many times. We've asked the Rails to Trails folks out to our club. They've toured the club. They've been very cordial the last few years and I think they've been very appreciative of what we actually offer the community. And they've been very verbal in stating that they're not going to harm us in any way. That is possibly one of the biggest hurdles of this whole trail. Creating a barrier for the trail walkers to be totally safe as they pass our seventeen hundred and forty feet of property while we shoot at them. Now, it sounds pretty bad, right? Shooting sports there are part of what the club does, but we have a phenomenal amount of programs. The town board has had me in. We've spoken about this. I've spoken with the ECAT group. I think everybody's aware about the value of that club. Yes, we make some noise for those of you neighbors who are here that we've disturbed and we've been making that noise since nineteen forty-three. We actually shoot less trap there now than we did in the fifty, sixty, seventies and halfway through the eighties. We have tons of archery programs that we had none before nineteen eighty-three. Now we have so many archery programs, I can't list them because there are so many subgroups of our club that run those. I don't know the names of those things. So to clarify things further about the ECAT group, and I see Deb back there, and our group, we've made very little progress in the last twenty years. However, in the last two weeks, our attorneys, keeping us out of it, have made quite a bit of progress. What we've wanted for years is a legal document stating exactly what's been said in public and agreed to, and that they would provide barriers, signage, utilities, whatever it takes, again, to convey the public down that trail while we shoot. Now, we don't shoot twenty-four seven. We do shoot trap there on Wednesday nights. Part of the year we shoot trap there on Monday nights to facilitate the two high school competitive teams that you heard about. But we also shoot archery. All the archery fields are there. Arrows should not get on the rail bed, but obviously you can't have the public walking down range. We've all agreed that of, of shooting ranges. So that's where we're at with that.
Thirty seconds remaining.
So we are working together with our attorneys. We're hoping to come upon an agreement. The document's been sent back and forth and back and forth, trying to get where we can agree on something that'll work. Keep in mind, a barrier of that type is going to probably cost a ton of money. The other thing that's come up and at that last meeting is there was a tremendous amount of turnout of residents along that trail that have many concerns. The most concerning thing that I have singly as Jack Bokun, not the president of the club,
Time.
is that's it. You're gonna have to get a cop to throw me off here, is
We got one.
the lack of response from ECAT group for the individual landowners to date. That needs to change. That needs to get better. They need to address these landowners. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Neil Hopkins.
I think he left.
Karen Howard. Nope. Uh, I can't read the writing. I'll, I'll tell the address. Fourteen eighty-seven Davis Road. Sorry, I just didn't want to murder your name.
Hello, thanks for listening to us tonight. James Riker, fourteen eighty-seven Davis Road, lifelong resident of West Falls in the rail bed. Not going to hash out everything that all my neighbors have hashed out already, whether pro or for, for or not. But I get, my neighbors have brought, brought it to attention. There are just a few things I feel compelled to advise, remind the board here tonight, along with questions you should ask yourselves. Number one, there is an existing resolution opposing this trail. It's, it's sitting there. Three hundred people were here in two thousand and eight. Get that resolution. Two, quality of life for all the residents to have property and homes adjacent to the railroad will be greatly infringed upon. Not going to get into drainage or into crime and all that. My house is right on top of this rail bank. Liability insurance, we as homeowners are required to have it. Again, ECAT, they don't tell you if they're going to have it or not. They should. The letter I received along with all my neighbors dated April seventh from a town of Aurora clearly states that ECR, ECRT does not require need or need the town board's approval to build a trail. Then I ask this question, why is the town board who works for the residents even considering to overturn the existing resolution opposing? Yes, a resolution for the trail would help ECAT secure all kinds of funding to build the trail. However, will not prevent crime, litter, invasion, or privacy, quality of life, et cetera. Throwing money at these, at these issues do not make them go away. Also, how do the benefits of the trail outweigh what the residents adjacent to the rail bed will be required to put up with twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? I remind this board that you work for the taxpayers that live adjacent to this rail bed, not ECRT. I do not believe anyone who doesn't live on the rail bed should carry any weight in your decision. As of the April seventh letter also states with the town, ECRT is committed to mitigating what the residents and businesses joining the rail bed. Just letting you know that ECRT has been saying that since two thousand and eight, and they would put it in writing for all concerned to review and approve. It has not happened to date, again, showing ECRT is not really concerned about how this will affect the property of business owners adjacent to.
Thirty seconds remaining.
In closing, I would like to say that ECRT has not proved to me over the last fourteen years to be good neighbors. Example, we had a meeting last Monday night in West Falls. They sent out letters the following day to all the people that signed in and spoke. They didn't send one to me. You, you're hearing why. Those are the people you're dealing with. They didn't send me or my wife a letter. Residents, my wife and I did not receive a copy of letter. I respectfully ask this board to keep the current opposed resolution in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia. Deb, Ben.
Way down the list, my goodness.
Well, you're down there.
Hi, yes. Hello, how are you?
How are you, Deb?
So just so you know, we're in good faith negotiations at this moment with the West Falls Conservation Club. And our attorney will talk more about that when she speaks. So my name is Deb Finn. I'm president of Erie Cataragus Rail Trail, Inc., an all-volunteer, not-for-profit organization, and I'm a resident of the town of Aurora, ten sixty-eight U. and Homewood Road. I'm here to simply ask the board to do what I feel is the right thing. The I don't want this trail argument essentially left the station in nineteen eighty-three when Congress passed the federal rail banking statute. This corridor is considered by our country to be a vital federal, a vital asset. It will always be owned by the railroad. Per the mandate, our forty-nine-year-plus lease agreement, it must be preserved, maintained, and converted into a multi-use recreational trail as an interim use to benefit the community. Foot by foot, mile by mile, we will build this trail. The quality of the resulting trail, whether it includes desired mitigations for privacy and safety, whether we can once and for all address the considerable culvert and water issues that have occurred during years of neglect, depend in large part on you. There are potential funders ready to provide and pay for the next stage of design specifically for the Aurora section of trail. A design that everyone in this room will have a chance to see, to mark up, to make changes to, until it is what the town and West Falls residents desire and deserve. It all hinges on your support. So you can chase away these potential funders and these, these opportunities to design and build this trail. Or you can take this opportunity and your obligation to your constituents to support us and the people who live in West Falls. So the choice is yours. If you want a trail we can all be proud of, you need to be proactive and participate in the process. You need to pass a resolution of support so we can get this trail done and get it done right. Thank you.
Hey, Tom Grogan.
Good evening. My name's Tom Grogan. I live at one seventy Curly Drive in Orchard Park, New York. The back of my property is adjacent to the trail. Before this, the section of the trail had opened, there were problems. Teenagers held underage drinking parties in the woods adjacent to the trail. People, people living adjacent to the trail used the land as their personal dumping ground. They left leftover landscaping materials such as pavers, broken concrete, wire mesh and lumber. They also dumped other types of debris. Since the trail has opened, there haven't been any of those issues. I've also had no privacy issues. I can see people enjoying the trail from my window. I really don't think the people are concerned about looking into my house from the trail. It's no different than people walking by the front of my house from the street. I consider myself fortunate that I have a linear park behind my house to use for enjoyment. It's a place that I feel safe and I don't have to be concerned with someone texting and driving while I'm walking, biking, or riding, running. Thank you.
Bill. Michael.
I'm Bill Michael. I live at fourteen eighty-one Davis Road, and I'm an adjacent landowner. So I share a lot of the concerns with the other landowners here tonight. When I first heard about the project, like many people, I was wondering about the impacts on my family's privacy and our safety and just on our general enjoyment of our property day to day. But since numerous trails like this have been built across this country, I figured, well, I'll look, there must be surveys, there must be data about there about what happens after these trails are built. So as I was looking at different surveys and studies, it's pretty clear the picture that's painted of everything that I saw, everything that I could find, I really saw that the overwhelming majority of adjacent landowners turned out the, the fears that we have don't turn out to be the norm. One study that looked at three trails found that the majority of owners reported no increase in problems since the trails have been established and that living near the trails was better than they had expected it to be. In another survey of adjacent, of trail adjacent landowners, they were satisfied, they were asked whether they were satisfied with having the trails, the neighbor, their neighbor. Eighty-eight percent expressed satisfaction or indifference with the trail. And of the hundreds of trails that we have in the U.S., of all the studies I looked at, I couldn't find a single instance where the majority of the people in a town or even the majority of the adjacent landowners were unhappy with the trail. To be clear, these surveys and studies, they didn't say that living next to a trail is perfect. And I understand that living next to the trail, it's going to mean giving up a degree of privacy. I know there may be issues now and then, but it seems from what I could tell that the economic and other benefits to the community because of the trail are proven and that the data show that any negatives far outweigh, far outweighed by the positives. And just like as personal, when I moved into my property ten years ago, there was a family next to me with small children and living right on Davis Road. Anyone that knows, people fly down Davis Road. Trying to take your kids for a walk along that road is an adventure. And that young family moved. Now, personally, I don't mind so much. Could we have the two best neighbors ever moved in next door to us? But it just is food for thought that I know when I go for a walk with my daughter on Davis Road, it's very tough. And it would be nice to walk out our backyard and walk down to the Orchard Park Library or, you know, wherever. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't read this next name, but I can read the address. Eighteen twenty-nine Davis Road.
I don't hear too good.
Eighteen twenty-nine Davis? Yeah.
Okay. Couple things.
Give us your name and, and your name.
Sure. If you give me time, I will. I'm a resident at Dantone, eighteen twenty-nine Davis Road, West Falls, New York, one four one seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, now I went to a meeting and on Rails for Trails, and I think it was in Orchard Park. And that was maybe four years ago. You get up in your eighties, you forget age. But at that meeting, I spoke about the dangers on Bem Road. Okay, there's been several accidents there, several, including death. Trucks go right through that, right across two, two forty. There's been people in the ditch. There's been people everywhere that's had their cars smashed up in there. That seemed to fall on deaf ears. Maybe it'll fall on deaf ears again. But there's been numerous accidents. I told you about the trucks. If you go up Bem Road, it's like going up on an airplane. You think you're climbing in the sky. That is a steep, dangerous road. You're going to have dogs. You're going to have kids. You're going to have bicycles. You're going to have just the average people crossing on them railroad tracks. Now they have blinking lights. They got stop signs, everything. But you come down there at night, you're not going to see it. And there's been just tons of, tons of accidents. Couple things. Who's going to maintain this? I have sent several, several emails to the Aurora Town Supervisor expressing the dirty, the grimy, the sidewalks are in terrible shape. The little park they got is full of cigarette butts. No one takes care of it now. Who is ever going to maintain a miles and miles long path?
Thirty seconds remaining.
That's who's going to maintain. That's why I'm opposed to it. Like I said, I lived there for forty years. That's why I oppose this rails, trails proposal.
Thank you. Dale Morris.
My name is Dale Morris, and I reside at two six eight Walnut Street in the Village of East Aurora. My wife and I have lived there for the past approximately five years. Prior to that, we lived on Snyder Road up in the town of Aurora for a little over twenty-five years. Want to thank you for this opportunity to appear before you tonight, make the statement. And I'll cut to the chase right away and just say that, yes, I am a supporter of the board. The fact I'm wearing a hat and looking at you probably is a good clue. The simple fact is, as we've heard, the rail trail is going to happen regardless of whether people support it or not. What is before you is a really unique opportunity this evening to make the trail a special place by opening up extra avenues of funding so that we can address the issues that we have heard about and that we can make this place, this trail, something that the entire town of Aurora community can be proud of. I'm actually here in three different capacities tonight. So this is like a sale. You're getting three viewpoints for the price of one. I am a member of the Rails for Trails Board. And as such, of course, I want to see this trail happen. I want to see it happen in the, in the proper way. I joined that board because in my opinion, this trail will make town of Aurora and the other communities that passes through better places, and I want to be part of that process. So I am a member of the Rails for Trails Board. And as such, I am urging you to approve this resolution of support. My second reason for appearing is that I am also a very avid runner. I am a member of the East Aurora Run Group, and I'm here to advocate for them and to take their position. East Aurora runners, there's a group of approximately three hundred, maybe a little bit more runners from the town of Aurora and surrounding communities. We meet regularly on three days a week, not the entire group, of course, but some groups of that meet during the week three times. That, the, the East Aurora runners represent kind of a wide range of talent, diverse backgrounds. But the one thing that all of those runners and myself included share is a concern about safety while we're running. But the one thing that all of those runners and myself included share is a concern about safety while we're running.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So most of us have had close encounters with vehicles and we believe that it's safer for us to have a trail such as being proposed, safe for us, safe for our children that sometimes run with us. Final point I want to make is that I am a retired professional urban planner. I have a degree from Cornell University in urban and regional planning. Forty years of experience trying to make Western New York community a better place for the residents to live. It is my opinion that this trail will contribute greatly to the quality of life and the community character that will really make a difference in the town of Aurora and the other communities that this passes. With all that as a background, I'm just going to strongly encourage you to approve the resolution of support for the Erie County, Erie Cataragus Rail Trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Kluge.
Kevin Kluge.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kevin Kluge. I'm a thirty-six year resident town and village of East Aurora. I grew up here, went to school here. My daughter did the same. And let's be honest about what's going on. This is a political issue. It always has been and it'll continue to be so. I represent the Town of Aurora Republican Committee. We are opposed to this trail. We have been. I am up for reelection as a committeeman. My running opponent is in favor of it, who holds town office. And these gentlemen and ladies behind me will be up for reelection again at some point. And what I want to ask them and ask all of you is, has an, has an economic impact forecast been ordered and completed? What's the economic benefit? Is there one? Has an environmental impact study been done? Has it been completed? Is there one? We want to know who is paying for this project, who's going to continue to maintain it, secure it. And this should be a public referendum. Not one group versus another to decide who has the greater political strength to build this. And to me, as a, as an economic major, as an economic, in the business of finance and banking for the last thirty-six years, there is no economic benefit to this at all. It's a negative externality. And all of the residents who have property against this rail to trail will realize a negative externality. Those of you that are in favor of it, would you want this through your backyard? You would. But it's, but it's, it's not being run through your backyard, is it? Sir, it's not being run through your backyard.
Sir, would you address the board?
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it comes this way. Thank you.
So I'm encouraging the board to vote against a resolution in favor of this trail because you will be recognized and you will be supported either for or against your decision to do so. Thank you.
Kathleen McCrone.
Hello, my name's Kathleen McCrone. I'm a resident of Orchard Park. I live in the neighborhood where the current open trail section goes through it and I'm an avid trail user. In addition, I'm, I've, I've used the trail prior to it opening and now that it's opened, it's become much better. I'm also a volunteer patroller where every time I use the trail, I have an app that I record my findings. If there's anything that needs to be done, the, the maintenance team is notified. It, recently I just joined the board and I am the one along with partner, Dorothea Waddles. We are now in charge of maintenance. So if anybody's looking to who's in charge of maintenance, it's two of us on the board as well as multiple volunteers and many other board members, we are all responsible. Number one priority is safety. We have procedures in place for, for patrolling and maintaining. If we're going to open up a new section, there's a procedure in place where we notify adjacent residents, we provide them with our contact information, email addresses and phone numbers. Once we, we tell them when we're going to do it, if we brush hog, we train all the volunteers that they must stay on the trail. They don't enter any private property. Once we decide to open a trail, we put up signage, we put up cameras to monitor traffic and usage. And the, the best way to get this trail maintained is to get your support and all work collaboratively, collaboratively together to get it done. We, the West Falls Conference, Converse Conservation Club is awesome. I would not want to see anything happen to that. I think we can work together and make things, we can all work together and make it right. So I urge you to support it because if we work together, it will be much better and we won't fight. We'll just work it, work it all out and it'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Russell.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to voice my opinion. I come before you this evening, I like to think of myself as a positive person, not a political person. And as a former adjacent property owner to the trail in question, I absolutely would have wanted that rail trail in my backyard. And I advocated for it at the time. I was a twelve-year resident of the Cold and West Falls area. I had a small farm, the northeast edge of this, of this property intersected with the rail trail corridor. There was all of the things, I have great empathy for everything that the residents here are complaining about, the litter, the garbage, the illegal activity, the obnoxious activity, the out of control ATVs. The problem is abandoned properties, abandoned railroad tracks are a magnet for trouble. And well-managed trails, well-funded trails can clean up that trouble. But I didn't want anybody to take my word for it. That was my opinion and I had great empathy for other adjacent property owners who disagreed with me. But I wasn't the only adjacent property owner that was in favor of this. It's a myth to think that all adjacent property owners are opposed. They weren't. And at that time, some of us banded together along with other members of the community because we wanted to know what the real sense was in the Cold and West Falls and Concord communities. What was the level of support? If it was all negative, we'd shut up. But what we did was we launched a very ambitious project. For three years, we surveyed, we did direct mail campaigns. It had a phenomenal response rate. We went to farmer markets, we went to festivals. We went to the elementary school where we pulled every single parent that came through the door at an open house. We expected maybe as most things with this, in this country, maybe a fifty-fifty split. We were stunned at the results. The results were overwhelmingly positive from the community at large. We had anywhere from in every different environment we were in, anywhere from a ninety-five to a ninety-eight percent positive response rate. People were excited about it. The most common question was, when's it gonna open? When can we use it? What can we name the trail?
Thirty seconds.
Can my kids get out there? Okay? So there was support for it. I still believe there's support for it. I personally know adjacent property owners are in favor of it. But in closing, I'll speak fast. There is one point that I just simply need to address this evening. A previous speaker mentioned, and I want to be positive, I don't even like to be negative, a bike path rapist. I was a media journalist at the time of that tragedy and I can tell you, look it up, the bike path rapist victims, most of his victims were on abandoned railroad tracks. We don't stop building playgrounds because there might be a predator. We don't not build parks because there might be a predator. We don't build, not build Walmart parking lots because there might be a predator. We do good things for the community and we don't give into fear. And I encourage the board to please turn around your previous vote, support this project. It is for the greater good and win-win solutions, please. We can do it out of due respect for all of the concerns. Thank you. I went over time.
Laura Gunderson.
Laura Gunderson, I'm a resident of West Falls. I'm an avid runner and I've trained for several marathons on Cole Road, Bem Road, Davis, and it's all very unsafe and very scary to run on. I grew up riding bikes and running on the Genesee Valley Greenway south of Rochester. Fantastic place to run and ride bikes on. Would love to see that in my backyard. I saw signs walking down my street, walking my dog on the very dangerous Bem Road Hill about the trail at the trailhead or the two B trailhead that ECRIT was opening up this trail. I said, what is this? They decided to look it up. I reached out and I asked, how could I help bring this asset to our community? We're a one hundred percent volunteer organization. We're all working in this community. We don't have a lot of time to dedicate to it, but it's important to us. We all want to see this trail come to life. Since joining, I've learned a lot about the history of the trail, including our focus on community engagement. Since our lease agreement in two thousand eighteen, our group has proactively focused on engaging our communities up and down the corridor. We have engaged through several tabling events that Susan has mentioned and have hosted several meetings like the West Falls Community Meeting at the Center for the Arts in two thousand nineteen. Our goal is to ensure we're developing a trail that meets the needs for our areas that we live and recreate in. We welcome anyone that has concerns or questions regarding the trail to please reach out at any time. We're always sure to respond to our community members. It's important for us to stay informed and to understand the ins and outs along the trail, especially as we progress into these design and funding phases. We've sent out letters to folks along the trail in, in our area on multiple occasions, including most recently after the West Falls Community Meeting. As it's important to us to share about the trail and to address concerns as they arise. We've also developed a West Falls and Aurora's Friends Group. We've got about thirty-plus members in that group that was developed pre-pandemic. And we're working on currently re-engaging now that we're gathering in person again. We keep our friends group informed through periodic newsletters detailing upcoming events such as friend raisers and among other trail updates and news. We're hoping to engage our crew as opportunities arise for future trail cleanups. And we really are hoping for this resolution of support. Please reach out. We are listening and we are engaged. Thank you.
Tyron.
Alagans.
Okay, sorry.
Tyron Palaginis, Orchard Park resident and also ECRT board member. I'll be fairly brief. You know, one thing that you saw a couple of days ago perhaps was that Kathy Hochul announced that approximately five point five million dollars.
Light switch right there.
You hit the plus sign.
Thanks a lot, Gary.
Lights are out. Good night, everyone.
But approximately five and a half million dollars from the Ralph Wilson Foundation was being allocated for Western New York trails in, in various, some for design purposes, some for actual construction, but those three recipients are the, the Art Park Trail Expansion in Allegheny State Park and then some funds for to Genesee Valley Greenway. And that is the supplement already, you know, millions of dollars that's being provided by the state of New York and other funding. So what I'm trying to get to here is that, you know, while I do understand all, you know, the frustrations and concerns for the residents that are along the trail regarding safety, litter, ATVs, whatever the case may be, the trail can't get those mitigation efforts unless we get those funds. And clearly those funds are out there and are available, but we're not going to be able to get our hands on them if we don't get a resolution of support from Aurora, Orchard Park, so on and so on. So the trail will continue on as it is, as Deb mentioned earlier, just plotting along with improvements as time and funding allows. But do we want to see just incremental small improvements and have those concerns and those mitigation efforts go unimplemented? Or do we want to see a big cash flow that will allow us to put up fencing and all the other things, all the accoutrements that we want as trail users and people who are opponents to it will want as homeowners? So I encourage you all to strongly please provide the resolution of support so we can get our hands and start applying for those big funds. So we can have a trail that makes everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Klotzbach. Is that right? Close.
Yeah, that's right. I'm Patrick Klotzbach. I live at two oh seven Jewett Homewood Road. And I'd just like to say, I want to give my support in favor of this, the rail trail. I've traveled throughout the country. There's this huge movement, the Rails Trails. I've enjoyed them all over the country. I've done some adventure tourism. Twice in my life, I've had the opportunity to live adjacent to a trailhead. It's a huge quality of life issue and it's not, it's not just for cyclists or runners. It's also for people of old age. And like myself, I'm getting older and as I go into my twilight, to have, to have access, something in our community. As I go, I like to be active. I do things all over just in Western New York, but having something right here. This is like a twenty-seven mile park that we can enjoy. There are definitely some legitimate concerns and I'd say if we can show as a community, we can support this. Let's get this funding. Let's take care of the interests of the adjacent homeowners. And let's all be a responsible community and let's have something really special. So I, I, that's what I, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Penny Messenger.
Penny Messinger, three sixty-five Center Street here in East Aurora. I'm very excited about the prospect of this rail trail. And I wanted to speak to one of the issues a couple of people have talked about. We lived in Ohio for about a decade. I've been in East Aurora for twenty years. And when I moved here, I was really kind of surprised that there wasn't a rail trail closer than Clarence Akron Trail. When our kids were little and we lived in central Ohio, we were on the rail trail a lot. It was a short drive. You know, it was a safe place. You could, my daughter actually started pushing her baby jogger on rail trail because you didn't have to worry about traffic. You know, it was a good family environment, a well-run bike trail is a huge community asset. And, you know, when, when, when we moved here and our children were little, they're grown now. You know, we would drive to Clarence and spend half a day and find somewhere to eat, have some ice cream. You know, it was, it's a really great asset. And, you know, I think that the issues that neighbors to the, neighbors to the rail trail have raised are issues that can be addressed. It seems like they're, they're being addressed and being considered. So I just wanted to show my support for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Egg Potter.
Thank you. Margaret Potter, one fourteen Park Place, East Aurora. And I guess I'm just going to echo some of the sentiments that you heard recently that has been pointed out, the rail trail is coming. And why wouldn't we want to make it the best that it can be by adopting a resolution that will allow you Erie Cataragus Rail Trail to access funds to make it so. That's all. Thank you.
Cindy and Mark Huger. Cindy and Mark. Not here. Lauren Weber.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Weber. I'm a boarder director and general counsel for Erie Cataragus Rail Trail. I wanted to take this opportunity to answer some questions that people have posed both tonight and last Monday at the West Falls Meeting. There was a lot of questions about who regulates the corridor, specifically, you know, not just the West Falls section, but the entire twenty-seven miles. just the West Falls section, but the entire 27 miles. As you may know, railroads are considered modes of interstate commerce. So because they're modes of interstate commerce, they're regulated by the US Congress. In 1887, Congress delegated this duty to the Surface Transportation Board or an agency that would become known as the Surface Transportation Board. The STB has exclusive authority over these railroads. In 1976, the US Congress attempted to address the loss of the railroad infrastructure. A lot of the railroads at that time were starting to close up and not be used. So Congress understood that these corridors that run all throughout the country were a national interest. They wanted to keep them together because if they were allowed to be abandoned, portions of these properties would cede back to adjacent landowners. They would cede back to the original property owner. So Congress understood that this was in the national interest to keep these together. So they passed the National Trail System Act, which allows these corridors, as they're not being used, to be leased by other entities who can take over these corridors and hold them out as trails. This process is known as rail banking, but it's important to remember that these corridors are still owned by the railroad. So even though ECRT holds a lease for the corridor, the corridor is still owned by the Buffalo and Pittsburgh Railroad. ECRT's 27 miles has been rail-banked, as I just explained. So we hold a lease to the corridor and we are therefore under a duty to manage, maintain, and utilize this corridor as a park. So under the terms of our lease agreement, we have to maintain the property. That's our duty as any landowner, any property owner, any homeowner knows. We have that duty. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to come speak to me after. I wanted to get into an issue about insurance. There was a lot of questions about who would take care of injuries on the property. The New York State General Obligations Law has a section that deals with people who get injured on property that's held open for public recreational use. Adjacent landowners cannot be held liable for any injuries that might occur on their property, even if somebody is trespassing. And that is through this New York General Obligations Law. One more thing, Erie Cataragus Rail Trail holds its own insurance policy with sufficient means to pay for any other things that may occur on the property. And lastly, I am one of the attorneys that Jack was talking about earlier that's been negotiating an agreement with West Falls Conservation Society. And I think he was being a little bit coy, but, you know, we've come to some great agreements. I think we're very close to a written agreement that some of you were talking about wanting. And that agreement does say that, you know, we will not use this property, we will not hold it open for use until there's some sort of protective barrier in place because we want to be a good neighbor to the gun club. We want to make sure that it stays open and it doesn't have to change any of its archery or target ranges. So that's something that we've been working on in the past couple of weeks and I think we're pretty close to an agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I forget, there's a gentleman sitting there that forgot to sign in. I don't want to forget you, so why don't you come on up and... No, we're not done, but if you wanted to speak, you didn't sign in, you forgot. Okay. How many do we have left, Jim? Just out of curiosity. How's that list looking?
How many people are left on the list?
How many remain on the list?
Oh, I've left.
Just, just for general reference.
Nine left.
Thank you. No, we already got the second sheet. We haven't, we're not done yet, sir. What?
Actually, I did call his name, he didn't come up. Okay.
I tell you what, I tell you why, why don't you come up now? I'm getting it over. I did call.
My name is Lawrence Caleri. I live at 4369 Lakeshore Road, Hamburg, New York. I'm a lifetime member of the West Falls Conservation Club. I've been an officer, Board of Directors. I'm a delegate to the Erie County Federation of Sportsman Club. We now represent 45 different sportsmen's clubs. The Sportsman's Club is behind West Falls. But that's here now, there. I'm talking about snowmobiles, snowmobiles being on the rails, the trails. By law, New York State's claims those are not motor vehicles, they can be on the rails, the trails. I have a personal friend who's a current, a recent widow, plowing her drive on the other side of Concord. She's plowing her drive. She's just a recent widow, she's using her snowmobile, being very careful, not knowing how to do it, coming up to her driveway. Her driveway, the rail crosses her front of her driveway. She almost gets clobbered by a snowmobile doing 50 miles an hour or more. She doesn't, she's really concentrating on herself. You people do not realize that snowmobiles can be running on this property. So when you're walking very carefully at night and the snowmobile's coming up your ass, excuse my French, better run. Thank you.
Gary Kopec? Am I close? Sorry. I should know that.
Hi, my name is Gary Keppel. I live in Orchard Park and I'm the Vice President of Erie County Railroad, the Erie Cataragus Rail Trail and Chairman of Design and Construction Committee. I just want to take a couple of minutes to explain the design and construction process, just so it is a little more clear on how this thing will get built. For each section of the trail, our process begins with ECRT hiring and engineering and architectural firm to produce a 30% to 40% design of the trail, identifying the trailhead locations, parking areas, road crossings, signage, safety features, and other details. In addition, the architectural firm, entering architectural firm will do a cost estimate for us, a preliminary cost estimate. So the design will be done in accordance with the, with the trail standards, the American Association of Traffic State Highway and Transportation officials, as well as other applicable federal, state, and local standards. So after this design is done, ECRT will review it, then we'll share it with all the stakeholders, all the town officials, the first responders, adjacent landowners, local government, general public. Comments will be received from all these stakeholders and we'll, we'll be updating the design with these comments. We'll consider these, these design additions for feasibility of cost and schedule and those things will be added if possible to the, to the final design. So we envision like the town of Aurora to say whether or not you'd like ash fault or crushed stone or snowmobiles on or off the trail. That's not our decision, that's a decision for the local townships and the people of the towns. A new version of the design with these changes will be used to solicit bids from a contractor and from a construction companies once adequate funding for the work is obtained. So if we have funding, we'll submit the work for bids and go ahead and execute the project. And after the construction is complete, the ECRT has a maintenance and operation team ready to begin their processes as well. So we have people on our board that are in charge of multiple, multiple volunteers that are taking care of these trails that we have open already. I want to just address drainage real quick. The first physical work we would do on any trail would be to repair the drainage along a section before any surfacing can be done. You don't want to surface something, then bring in equipment to clear out ditches and replace culverts. So that would be the very first thing we do. That would be included in the scope by the contractor.
Thirty seconds remaining.
These, these drainage repairs would include culvert replacement repairs, ditch repairs, and other drainage issues. And this we would use, probably use an engineering firm as well. The West Falls Conservation Society, that protection mechanism will be designed by an engineering firm as well. We would probably not do that ourselves. We'd get some design recommendations, review it with their club.
Time. Wow. Thank you. Philip Payne.
Philip Payne, 365 Center Street, East Aurora. I will not be taking the whole time. So I just want to add, it was my daughter also that took the baby jogger from me on the bike path and, and like wouldn't let me jog her anymore. But we've lived in a couple of places where they've had bike paths and they're just huge community assets like. And I will add to whatever balance has been saying, that when we first moved to Western New York, we moved to Allegheny right after that bike path was built, the one that goes down by the Allegheny River and it's now got an extension to it. And when we first moved there, there was still a lot of hard feelings about the path going in. And I still drive down there, I work down there. And when you go down there, that bike path is all, that, that path is always full. People are biking on it, walking on it, running on it. They build an extension to it and it's just become like an embedded part of the community. In fact, I would guess if you tried to take it out now, it would be like, like an uprising. So that's, I'll leave everything at that. Thank you.
Brad Kenny.
Don't really know which way to talk, but...
This way.
It's Brad Kenny and I live at 48 Bridge Street. I have the trifecta tonight. Our property is adjacent to the railroad tracks. I got an accident at Center and Blakely and I used to live on Bain Road and you can get air on those for sure. I, I have a family with three young kids and the trail is exciting from that standpoint for me and my family personally. And living across from the Conservation Club, fed a lot of discussions with, with the club and the board there just about the, the timing and everything of shooting and the frequency of shooting. And the club is a, is a great asset for the, for the area. It's great to hear that there's going to be, you know, working on something that makes it all work. But as a resident, it's just one thing to keep in mind that it is loud and that club is in a unique location with residents within 100 feet all the way around. So anything that's considered there just needs to be thought of that it's a unique area that we can't really make it louder for, for the residents, if at all possible. And I think that's, that would be the sentiment of, of the neighbors around us as well. But I know that, you know, this brings a lot, the trail coming through backyards is a, that's a nervous situation. It's just for us, I think we're definitely looking forward to it as a, as a young family in the area and looking for things to happen in West Falls with the new funds for 240. There's a lot of excitement that could, that could be happening. So thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Mitchell.
Chuck Mitchell, 193 Old Glenwood Road. So I live on the other side of the road that borders the rail trail. I'd like to urge you to, to support the trail. I think the best thing you can do to help neighbors mitigate the problems they've had is to help them get that support. I think there are a number of things that the town could do. One of the things we've heard a lot about is this issue with the shooting range. In some places where there are trails, they bring the trail out to the road for a little ways and they go along the road for a little ways and then come back on. And so the town could be involved in helping to accommodate that local workaround of that section of the trail where you might not want people walking because of the firing range, for instance. Also in, in some communities where there are trails of this sort, the local community provides a little bit of local policing, Amherst Police Bike on the bike trail up at Amherst, potential, if people worried about crime on the trail, that the town could take some role in helping to provide a little bit of safety there as well. So overall, I'm looking forward to the trail being more developed. I think it'd be a good thing for the community. I'd like to use it myself. Again, biking, skiing, hiking, I think it'd be a great asset to have in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Jeff Sellers.
I'm a West Falls resident, been there about 14 years. I'm adjacent to the trail. I support the trail as an avid bike rider and runner. I've had numerous incidents on Davis Road. I think I grew up in the city of Tonawanda, moved to California, came back, decided to raise my family out in West Falls. And we lived in Tonawanda, we used, growing up, we used the bike trails daily. It was great for getting ice cream, dinner, whatever it might be. Since then, I've joined the Board of ECAT and I'm, I want to talk a little bit about the patrolling when we opened up the Orchard Park section. We do all volunteer patrolling of the trail. We have over 20 volunteers. They have vests. We, we meet with them a couple of times a year. We have a login where after they patrol the trail, even if they walk 100 yards, we have them log in, how many people they've seen, if they have any downed trees, maintenance, whatever it might be, we jump right out and everyone on the board has access to those surveys. So that has been a success so far, just getting eyes and ears out on the trail. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Michelle Shoneman.
Hi, Michelle Shoneman, 107 North Grove in East Aurora. A few years ago, I had the opportunity to knock on lots and lots of doors in the community, including West Falls. And I, back then, it was still an issue, this rail to trail discussion was, was already happening, as you know. And I did hear support for rail to trail. I also heard a lot of people who were nervous about it. Some of the comments that have been made tonight reflect some of the things I heard a few years ago and I completely empathize and sympathize with people's concerns, frustrations, fears about their adjacent properties and what might happen to that. With that being said, since then, I've talked to a lot of people in other areas that, whose properties are adjacent to rail, to rail to rail type things. And I have not yet heard anybody who's dissatisfied, although I'm sure there are people, I just don't know of them. But I think the satisfaction level is higher than anticipated. So hopefully that will happen again here since this, from what I understand, is going to happen regardless. It's just a matter of whether or not it's, the funding comes through to get it done properly or have it be sort of a slow-go frustrating process that people are dissatisfied with. So I would urge the Board to support the resolution, to pass a resolution to support the Erie Cat Rail Trail and, but also for Erie Cat to take everything that they heard tonight and everything they've heard over the past several years and, you know, really, really consider the frustrations and fears and concerns of the people who are going to be affected most. And I, I do, from what I'm hearing tonight from people who are associated with the project, it does seem like they are taking the concerns very seriously. I hope that continues and I hope there's a lot of transparency and I hope that the Conservation Club can maintain all the things that they do so wonderfully. So, but I do urge you to, to pass a resolution and support. Thank you.
Douglas Crow.
Douglas Crow, 1951 Davis Road, West Falls. I'm not immediately adjacent to the, to the road, but to the trail, but I'm like three, four houses away. We walk around the neighborhood a lot, myself and my wife, very passionately in favor of this and I would urge the Town Board to, to consider recommending approval. I, I understand the, the people's concerns on the impact that this could have on them and I would just remind them that everybody has neighbors and everybody's neighbors has impact on your property. And so if you had a empty field next to you and somebody decided to put a business there that they had a right to because of zoning, that would impact you negatively and you have no right to say no, as long as they fit the zoning code and they fit the law. So this is the same situation, not exactly, that, that this is property that is, the federal government has the right to do what they've done and... So this is the same situation, not exactly, that that this is property that is the federal government has the right to do what they've done and railbank it. And they've chosen to encourage rail trail building in that area and that's going to have some impact on you. I believe it'll be more positive than negative. It may be negative to some people, but that that's what happened. That's what being part of a community is, is you. You have to let your neighbors enjoy their property and it's not. And when it's commonly owned, like owned by the town or by the county or by the state or by the federal government or by the railroads. And the federal government has control of it, then it's the whole community that is your neighbor. And the whole community has a right to have a say in how that land is used, not just the people that are immediately adjacent to it. So I would encourage you guys to be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Tarrant.
Good evening. Renee Tarrant, 215 Bowen Road. I am the co-owner of Kickstand Culture, a local bike shop in town. I am also an avid cyclist and I am speaking from experience of having ridden my bicycle on the roadways and it's extremely dangerous. I actually went head over heels over the handlebar and suffered three herniated discs in my neck. And I am an absolute advocate for having more trails to allow families and individuals to ride in a safe environment. I have not allowed that injury to stop me from cycling. Just last year, I went on the CNO and the Great Allegheny Passageway that went from Pittsburgh, well, I went from DC to Pittsburgh. And it was absolutely beautiful. I went through some neighborhoods that had been severely in decline economically. And what's happened now with this trail is it's brought back livelihood to these towns where industry has left them and left them completely without any means for income. So now people are opening Airbnbs, they are expanding restaurants, there's all sorts of income now that's coming back into those communities. And I feel that that's the same that's possible here along this trail, that it does provide some opportunity for the community, for the citizens. And to keep people safe on the roadways. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to read this J. Johnl from Marilla. Are they saying that right?
I live in Marilla. I wear several hats. I'm a retired lieutenant from DC and done regular police duties as well. I live up in Clarence and to put up with the foolish rail to trails, splitting through farmers' properties. People going down and going on the machines, kale getting out in the trails.
Sir, could you just, thank you. You can lift it up.
Fences, I run out of oxygen. But you have problems for the farms. You're going to have problems with maintenance. You're going to have problems with liability. Who's going to maintain the physical trail, not just pick up the garbage? This thing sloughs off or slides or it's not stable. Who's going to post the stop? Who's going to put out and clear it? Are you going to hire a supervisor and six patrolmen? You're going to hire the people from the voluntary rescue squad and buy the machines to get access on these trails that aren't accessible for selling the equipment? You got a lot of things to think about. Are you going to compensate these people for loss of privacy, loss of use of their lands? No, fair's fair. Are there pluses? Sure. There's places this is perfectly appropriate. There's other places this is just not acceptable. Look at the physical risk. Go out and take a walk down this proposed area. I wouldn't bike it. I wouldn't sled it. I wouldn't ski it. I know what's going to happen. I'm done. I'm retired. I don't like doing accident reports. I don't like doing death notifications. This place is not the appropriate place for this. I would encourage you to look at the consideration of going around some of these areas and using the roads. And send them back further. Make a wider bike path, make a better access area. But to put people into these areas. I'd be out there with caution and warning signs trying to protect my liability. This is not an appropriate spot for what they're talking about doing. Yeah, it's nice to paper over and put lipstick on all the problems they've got. Again, there's places that's appropriate. This isn't one of them. Thank you for your time.
Bob Hoover.
So Bob Hoover, 186 Elmwood Avenue. Moved east Aurora. Three years ago, I lived in a neighborhood in Orchard Park, across the street from the rails to trails. And I'll tell you, first thing, people are going up and down behind those houses before there was a rail to trail. So it's safer now because it's being patrolled. Second thing, I I travel all over the country. Saturday, I was running in Pennsylvania on a rail to trail. People there, safe. But really, what it comes down to is money and access to money. All the concerns that are valid concerns that were raised to can be addressed if funding was released. This is going to happen. We were told that. This is going to happen. If it's funded correctly, we have an opportunity to address the concerns of the residents. Without the funding, you know, you're still going to have the issues. So thank you.
Lisa Rude.
Hi, I'm Lisa Rude, 87, 98 Zimmerman Road in the town of Boston. And I come to you wearing many hats also. So first of all, my husband is the president of the Boston Conservation Club and I shoot trap there. So I understand your situation. I'm also a board of director for the Erie Catragus Rail Trail. I got involved with that because I went down horseback riding on the Pat McGee Trail that Rick LaFieber was up here speaking of several years ago. You know, there's less and less space for people to go horseback riding that's safe. There's four wheelers all over creation and those motocross bikes. That was a safe place to ride. And guess what? It's a nice dry area. You don't find dry areas to ride in in times like this in the spring or in the fall. It's muddy, it's wet. But the trail bed is a elevated surface, so it's dry. It's wonderful. It's a safe place. And, you know, I spoke of hats. I'm also the former supervisor in the town of Boston. I'm a former councilwoman in the town of Boston and I know where you're sitting. I know the situation that you're in and it's a shame that this has become a political issue. And I'm also a Republican and I'm kind of sad to hear that it's Republicans that are against this. East Aurora has been built on equine activities. You've got a horse on your seal. You've got Knox Farm right down the street. It's a horse park. They play polo there. There's trails. I've ridden the trails there. They're fabulous. And I encourage you to take a look at all the wonderful things that this trail can bring to your town. Another jewel in the crown of your town. A fabulous place for families to take their kids to do sports without their phones. I really encourage you to support this resolution because it's going to be a good thing. We are working to try to deal with all the people's situations that they have. And I understand that I deal with drainage problems myself up on a hill, for crying out loud, in Boston. But we're working to try to improve things. And if we have resolutions from the towns that's involved, then we're going to be able to get more funding. That's what it comes down to. Last Friday, I spent my afternoon planting trees that I got from Turnbull's Nursery as a donation with a 4H Club. For the trail so that we can provide screening for the people whose houses might be very close to it. We're working to try to address these issues, whether it's through burns, screenings, fences perhaps, but guess what? Those all cost money. I got some trees donated. That's great. But guess what? We need more money so that we can anticipate and take care of the problems that the people are worried about with it being so close to their properties. So again, I urge you to do the right thing. You're speaking for the whole town. You're elected to do that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Maura Cavell.
Jim, let's just say to anybody online to use the raise your hand function now if you would like to speak and.
Hey Luke, we're going to take the gentleman in the that didn't sign in too.
Good evening. My name is Murray Cavell. I live at 249 Fox Metal Lane in Orchard Park, New York. Recently joined board member of the CAT group or the board. And, you know, in that three months, I've learned a lot about the trail and what the challenges are. Much like my career, I spent 34 years with Praxair up in Tonawanda in maintenance, operations, engineering management, project management around the globe. And and we've got a lot of challenges ahead of us. And as a board member, you know, I want to clearly understand what the stakeholder issues are. And it's great to come out to these meetings and understand that, good and bad. And bring those back to the board and really make sure that we're challenged as a board to to get those things done. I'd encourage you to to consider a resolution and support. One of the most important things I think I heard today was that I hope we're not making a decision based on a return on investment. Because I don't think that's how rail to trails get built. I don't think that's how parks get built. I think parks and those sorts of things and rails to trails get built because of those pictures on the back wall. Because there's beauty in our backyard. And for me, the most encouraging thing about joining the board was it was all volunteers. And you've heard a lot of them speak tonight and how hard they work and how hard they've been working for many years. The vision of joining a network of trails that exist in Western New York. And what that can mean for people to get off the roads with their families and really get out to see the beauty in our backyard. And enjoy things safely. I too am a biker, snowmobiler, runner, walker, mountain biker, whatever it takes to get out into the outdoors and and enjoy myself. And I love getting out into the Western New York area and seeing the outdoors. So thank you.
I don't know the gentleman that did not sign up. I don't know your name, but.
I'm Howie Holmes. You can tell by my wardrobe where I stand, I'm sure. I want, I wanted to just, I was glad Penny spoke from about their going up to Clarence and riding. Because when we first started this way back, we went up to Clarence with our supervisor and some other supporters. And we wanted to see the trails up there and they were amazed that we were facing opposition. They love the trails up there. They couldn't get enough of them in town. And we noticed that people were building little ramps out of over the ditches from their house onto the trail. And Clarence and the Amherst people just love the trail and I think they they still do. Nobody spoke about yet about the economic benefits. We've already started on that. We've been having our meetings here in the senior center for about the last year. And after our meetings, Rick LaFieber who talked and Gary Kepel who talked, we formed a separate committee. The ABC Committee after our meeting. It's called the Adult Beverage Committee. And we end up at 42 North Irwell and once every month. So we're helping the economic.
How did you say we could sign up for that? Okay, online, do we have anybody, Elizabeth? Okay.
We'll start with, hello, can you hear me? We'll start with Nancy Smith. Nancy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, my name's Nancy Smith and I live at 195 Sycamore. And I wanted to begin by just thanking you for your service to our community as board members and as our town supervisor. My comments reflect my experience as the founding chair of the East Aurora Village Tree Board and a former chair of the Aurora Open Space Committee. The last couple of years, I've had a chance to learn about projects actually across North America in working with the Highline Network. And many of these are projects that are reimagined former rail corridors. And a number of them, like this one, passed through a large number of distinct communities and municipalities. I want to just mention three lessons of things that I've learned that I think were applicable tonight. It is essential to listen and work in partnership with your neighbors. The very best projects are co-created with neighbors where transparency and communication are highly valued. I would encourage any of the neighbors to continue to reach out and connect with Erie Catragus Rail Trail. And I'm confident that they'll continue to strengthen and build the relationships with those neighbors. The second, in this pandemic, it's become so clear that we all benefit from more time spent in nature. Places that combine opportunities to exercise and also be in nature are an incredible community asset. Third, I hope there are some lessons from the success at the Mill Road scenic overlook. Early on in that project, there was some misinformation and fears. Creating places like Mill Road and this trail can be uncomfortable as they take shape because change is often uncomfortable. But I I believe that this too will become a much-loved community asset, a place that will enrich the lives in our community for generations to come. I strongly encourage you to support the Erie Catragus Rail Trails Resolution for Support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Kin.
Hi, I'm Tom.
We can hear you. Yep.
I recently have been contacted or I've been in touch with Connor Schneider, Rick LaFieber, Gary Copel, Debbie Fenn, Chris Jacobs, the majority of a lot of the people that I'm opposed to this trail. I'm a landowner. I live on 180 Old Glenwood Road. I'm having some issues with culverts right now and Rick LaFieber is taking care of that from what so far hasn't, but he has been trying. And I've noticed that a lot of people that are going for the trail are like reading speeches and I don't have that. I'm not prepared because I'm in Florida right now. I'm vacation. And I can't be at this meeting, so I'm trying to do this over my phone right now. But I've had letters, emails, I've talked with vice presidents, presidents of the railroad, presidents of the vice presidents of the bike path. And like I said, I got Chris Jacobs involved and he had some guy come down here, Department of Transportation and a whole bunch of people trying to get things done. And it's not working. And I noticed that a lot of people that are for the trail are talking about increasing the businesses and contributing to businesses that are down this 27 miles of railroad. And there is no businesses that I can see them contributing to, so I can't, I can't see it being economical for our town. So I just want to make sure that, you know, just voice my opinion because I'm here and I don't have nowhere else to turn to because I'm here. But I've been to all the meetings. I've gone to meetings in Orchard Park. And I've gone to meetings in East Aurora. I've gone to meetings in the that the gun club. And one of the big things was that I've talked to the police in Orchard Park and the police in East Aurora. And they're not going to monitor this trail. I have 12 grandchildren, or me and my wife have 12 grandchildren that are buttoned right up to that trail. And I know I'm not sure if there's any troubles going on or anything like that, but we're, there's not going to be any support from them because that's additional duty. And I understand that the bike path ECRT was going to supply people with jerseys or, you know, fluorescent orange jackets or whatever. And patrol these paths, but they're not going to have any jurisdiction to doing any of these, any of these arrests or anything that if anything happens. And I'm not sure it is going to happen, but it could. But a lot of people that are for the trail don't live on the trail. Including my neighbor that spoke earlier at 190 Old Glenwood Road. He's a good neighbor of ours. But they live on the other side of the road. Of course, you're going to go for it. There's a lot of.
Seconds remaining.
Okay. And well, that's pretty much all I got to say. I just wanted to make sure that Connor Schneider, Dave Gunner, Rick LaFieber, all got emails from me last week. That showed my concerns for all these problems that are going on. And I am opposed. I just want to make sure and I hope that the town does not approve this, you know, or not approve it, but doesn't doesn't go for the opposition. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
And then the final speaker is Evan Roden. Evan.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Evan Roden and I live at 2037 Grover Road in West Falls. I'd like to bring everyone back to the same place. This trail is going to happen whether we vote in favor of this or not. The only thing we're debating here is whether or not to actually fund the other things around the trail. Like protecting the watershed or the Conservation Club or making sure that the area remains clean and safe. That leader of the Republican Committee that spoke earlier seems. leader of the Republican Committee that spoke earlier seems to misunderstand that simple fact. He seems to think that denying approval would stop the trail. It won't. It'll just make things worse for those that own property near the trail. I'm going to join others in this community in supporting the rail trail. This project is excellent, and I hope it's expanded further. I love that New York State and Erie County are supporting cycling, especially through our most beautiful properties, rather than being used by noisy, polluting trains. These trails benefit communities. They benefit the users of trails, and they're far quieter than trains. These trails reduce the noise to, these trails are far quieter than a train going through the area, and they make communities a lot safer. A rail trail isn't going to put diesel smoke onto your property. It's not going to honk a horn to wake you up at night, and it's not going to shake your very foundation. If you want this done right, and if you want your property's watershed protected, and if you want the trail to be built in such a way that you love having this near your property, you should support the trail's approval by the town. If you want a wall or concrete tunnel so that you can shoot in a particular direction, rejecting approval from this town will kill any possibility of funding that. If you're concerned about a bike path being used to kill people, wait until I tell you about the number of people that have been abducted or hit by cars walking on roads. Making a bike path will make people safer. I highly encourage the support of this resolution.
Apparently, we have one more.
Jill, are you there?
I'm sorry. I think you unmuted me. I'm still Evan.
Jill?
Yes, I'm here.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, I am Jill Rivera. I reside at 1895 Davis Road. We also have a business, as well as our residence here, that backs up to the trail. I know a gentleman just spoken. So that no businesses would benefit from the trail. I do feel that our business would. While we would like a fence to kind of limit how people get into the farm, we own a blueberry farm, by the way. We do feel that it would sort of like a billboard for our business, bringing people that might not know about us from other areas into our area. So we, we do think that the resolution would be beneficial to get the fence, and like I said, help promote the, our farm in the process. So.
Thank you.
Elizabeth. Okay, I think everyone's had time to speak. I hope everyone got to say what they need to. Well, we need your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mike Cummings. I live at 2018 Davis Road in West Falls. I'm a member of West Falls Conservation. I'm not for this trail. I do think it would be a good thing. But I don't think that once it's done, and they get this funding, who's gonna maintain it? Who's taking care of all the culverts that they gotta fix to build the trail? Who's gonna come back and fix them when they get washed out again? Because it happens all the time. That's why there's a 20-foot opening right now. And what's to say it's not gonna happen again? And if it does, who's gonna take care of it? The town? The taxpayers? That's why I'm not for this. I don't want this trail at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
How are you? Christian Fabiano, 1905 Davis Road and 7154 Davis Road. You know, it's obvious, we live in some divided times these days. There's a lot of people on both sides of everything, it seems. And it's kind of sad to me to sit back and watch neighbor pitted against neighbor in a small community like this. And with half the neighbors saying, you know, we have legitimate concerns. We have concerns of privacy. We came here, or we stayed here for privacy. This is why most people come to the areas like this. And we have concerns of privacy, loss of privacy, theft, any other dangers involved. And on the other side, we have people that say, we don't care. We need another place to run around. We need another place to ride my bicycle. So I think, you know, we have to put the proper amount of weight on these things. I know that the folks along the rail trail that are gonna be impacted the most in West Falls are a small amount of the towns' people. And I know votes are always on folks' mind. But I think we need to really heavily weigh their thoughts, because they have legitimate concerns. And their concerns are real. They're not that we need another place to run around. We need another place to jog. And if I'm not mistaken, we are very close to Justin Ridge Park. We've got an amazing, rather new state park right across the street, almost. County Forestry, Sprague Brook Park, Hunter's Creek Park. What's the one I need under 16 here?
Emery.
Emery. We're loaded with parks. I'm in these parks every single day, walking my dog. And believe me, they're not overrun. There's not a lot of people in almost any of them. We really don't need more places to go. Okay, there are some factions in all walks of life that are never satisfied. We need more. After that trail, guess what? They're gonna need another trail. They're gonna need another park, because there's people that aren't just, they're not satisfied. So I hope that we can put some weight on the people that it affects the most that are living along the trail directly, and a little bit less weight on the folks that are crying that they need another place to ride their bicycle around. Thank you.
Okay, I think everyone's had a chance to talk to, any comments from the board before we close the forum?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. It's, it's great to get this amount of community feedback. Obviously, this is an important issue, and it's been a long meeting, and I appreciate everybody's patience and taking the opportunity to speak. And I especially appreciate the fact that everybody's respectful. I think that speaks to all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll close the public forum, and we're right back into our meeting. And I need a motion to approve the abstract.
I'm moved.
Motion by Luke, second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post as carried, and a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Have a good evening.